This is the June 9th meeting of the Revere City Council. I'll rise and salute the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members. Councillor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Councillor Gino.
Here.
Here, Councillor Guanasso. Is absent, Councillor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councillor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councillor Novoselski.
Here.
Here, Councillor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councillor Penta.
Here.
Here, Councillor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councillor Reardon.
Here.
Here, Council President Zambuto.
Here.
Here, a quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Meeting of June 2nd, 2014.
So moved. All in favor, all opposed, so voted.
Calendar item number one, the presentation of the George V. Colaula Academic Awards.
This is always kind of bittersweet for me. It's great that we give out these academic awards in the name of my dear friend, George V. Colaula, who I miss terribly, but it is a good occasion that the students will receive the awards. Mr. Farrar. And Ms. Ty. Sorry. Don't mind me, I'm a little discomplimented. Who was that calling from the peanut down?
Oh.
I'm the Roddy Dagerfield of the Revere City Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to welcome you all here this evening for the presentation to our scholars from our middle schools and our elementary schools. At this time, I would love to acknowledge the members of George Colaula's family that are here, his daughter Joan, his daughter Jennifer, and his daughter Liz, who flew in from the great state of Texas for the ceremony tonight. Girls, is the stand up? Could I have the Colaula girls stand up, please? Thank you. It is with great pleasure that every year we present these awards. It was George Colaula's wish that whatever money be left in his campaign fund would be given to the students of the elementary and middle schools of the city of Revere in recognition of their outstanding achievements. Tonight, we have some tremendous, tremendous academic students here. At this time, I would like to call upon Mayor Colaula. Ah, I'm sorry, Mayor Rizzo. Sorry, folks, I'm brainwashed after 30 years to bring the grading to the city.
Dan, thank you very much. The sad part is, I was actually responding to that. I was coming toward the microphone zone. Well, first of all, to the Colaula family, I want to thank you for your continued support in your father's name for the many children in our community. He spent many, many years here in government. In fact, one of the most remarkable things that I remember during my now close to 20 years, well, strike that, 12 years in the city council, now about three years as mayor, but, you know, I think back to looking in my father's high school, my father's high school yearbook and a picture of George Colaula as a school committee man back there. So that really resonated for me when I entered politics and said, wow, what a, and then to serve with him here on the city council was just, it was an incredible experience. But in any case, I just want to congratulate all of the students who are recipients here tonight. I want to congratulate their teachers, their principals, that, you know, that just do a tremendous and amazing job here in our school system. I don't know how many of you know this, but all of these elementary and middle schools ultimately, for the most part, funnel into our high school, which was just voted number one in the nation by the National Center for Urban School Transformation. So all of the great work that is being done by these fine teachers that you see here tonight and these great administrators, principals, assistant principals, that clearly is paying off here for the children of our community. So on behalf of all the residents in the city of Revere and certainly my colleagues here in the city council, I know, I know President Zambuto already extended his congratulations, but I want to once again extend my congratulations to all of you for a great job. We continue to look for bigger and better things as you progress along in the Revere school system.
At this time, it's with great pleasure to call on the co-chairperson, who worked with George Colaula for as many years as I have, school committee woman Carol Ty and superintendent Emeritus.
Well, I have a yearbook collection for the Historical Society, and there is a big picture of George Colaula right in the front because he was the president of the class He married his high school sweetheart, June Murphy. I always said he needed a little Irish to temper him a bit. She had been voted as having the best personality, so they were a wonderful couple. World War II was over, and he thought that he might become a reporter in Chicago, but instead he went to BU and went on to serve his country in a very different way, right here in this hall for almost, well, let me see, for his school committee service. I'm trying to think about, I was just, 50-plus years altogether, but I was a young teacher when there was, when the collective bargaining law was passed, and we had no contract and we had nothing in writing about anything. And George decided to give me lessons in municipal finance. You know, he had a library in the basement of his house, and I was one of the lucky ones who learned how to run a budget for both the school department and the city and what the implications of that were from George Colaula, and I have always been grateful for that. We weren't always on the same side of every argument, but who's always on the same side with your best friends even? And people who push you, I mean, your hardest teachers, think of it, children, your hardest teachers are the ones that you remember the most because they pushed you to do better than maybe you thought you could do, which George was that kind of person. He would make you, if you said, if you made a statement about financing or something, he'd make you prove it. What's the law for that? What's the background for that? How do you know that? I don't think that's so. And boy, could he quote laws to prove that you were wrong too. So you'd better be on your toes. But he was just wonderful. He was always an educator. And so when he decided that this is what he would do with his money, he passed his influence on Enter the Future because I'm hoping that all of you stars will move ahead. I've seen you in science fairs, I've seen you in history fairs, I've seen you in spelling bees, I've seen you in writing wards, so that I know you will be the stars and you will be continuing to make us the best high school in the United States. So I congratulate you and I thank everybody. Thank you to the council, of course, for being wonderful hosts here, as always. Many of you have very personal memories of George, and I know that this is very important to you as well as to the rest of us. So we're going to call upon people, we'll call in the order of the schools, elementary first and middle school next, in an alphabetical order. So Mrs. O'Connor, that means you are coming up first, and I'd ask you to invite your scholar, Siamara Romani Rojas, and all of the family and the teachers who are with you to share in the glory. Would you come forward, please?
Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 She goes above and beyond and does even better than we could expect from any one of our fifth graders. She is a positive influence on all of those around her, and she is a valued member of our student council. Outside of school, Nina participates in basketball, softball, and dancing. Nina will attend Garfield Middle School in the fall, where we know that she will continue to inspire all those who encounter her. Congratulations, Nina.
Mr. Ed Mosher, please, from the McKinley School, to present the award to Yassir Sukaki.
Good evening. It's truly an honor to be here this evening. Yassir is truly an exceptional student. He's a product of Revere Public Schools system. In kindergarten, he attended the Lincoln School, and then midway through grade two, we were fortunate enough to get him at the McKinley School. Since coming to the McKinley, he has been an exceptional student. In grades three, four, and five, he's been on the principal's list every trimester. He loves math and science. He is, in all my years of teaching, he is truly the most thorough, conscientious student I have ever seen. Evidence of that is during MCAS, the untimed tests. Even though Yassir is done, he's there for the long haul. He's the last one to turn his test in. Matter of fact, we kept the doors open one afternoon because school was just about over, and he still wanted to check every problem. Isn't that right, Yassir? He loves math and science. He's not sure, but he thinks it'll either be a scientist, mathematician, or an engineer. In his recreational time, he loves playing outside with his big brother, Walid, who is also one of McKinley's finest students. He's truly an exceptional student. He'll be entering Rumney Marsh Academy in the fall. There is no doubt that he will be a success there as well. It's an honor and a privilege to present the George V. Kalala Academic Achievement Award to Yassir Sukaki. Congratulations.
And now I invite Mrs. Barbara Kelly to come forward to give the award to Aya Hopper. You might notice the brother-sister team over here. Mrs. Kelly is the sister of counselor Richard Pinter.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll wait till everyone gets up. I'm so proud to present Aya Hopper from the Parivea School, and I'm just going to tell you a little about Aya, but I think you can tell by looking at that beautiful smile on her face. That's how I am greeted every day, and it's my pleasure to welcome her. She, again, like everybody in this room, is quite academic. She has principal lists since the third grade, all As since the third grade. Her MCAS scores in grade three and four were perfect scores, advanced on both ELA and math. Her A-Net scores, she has a 97% average on math for all four interims. Her ELA average is 84 for all four interims for A-Net. So she's very academic, but the extra things that you don't know about Aya that I share, I see her on the floor doing fluency buddies. I see her when I walk through the classrooms evaluating the teachers, and she's always sharing. She's always helping somebody. Like George, I thought this was a perfect award. He was a leader. Aya is a leader who wants to help others succeed. That, to me, is a true leader. And Aya, you are a true leader in our school. Her father has been a basketball coach for the teachers and helped us win over the students. So I want to thank him, too. But Aya has a dream. She doesn't know what she wants to become, but she knows she wants to go to Northeastern University like her mother. Right now, she got into the math program, it's called Math Powers, in the summer, last summer, and it was a challenge for Aya. She wasn't the right grade level or age to be accepted, but she got in because her mother being an alumnus, and she struggled. This year, she can't wait to go back this summer and succeed because she knows she said all of the answers this year, right, Aya? She's really, really a doll. So I want to thank Aya and tell her that we are very proud of her. She does dancing on the weekends. She belongs to gymnastics for six years. She's on the St. Mary's softball team, the Tritons, and just got accepted to the All-Star team. So we're very proud of her. She just found out. So you can see, Aya's a well-rounded student, and she also led a spelling bee for two years at Parivea School and went on to the Nationals and was this close to going to Washington, D.C. But she's going to Rumney Marsh, so maybe Rumney Marsh will have the spelling bee, and Aya will go to Washington to represent Revere. Thank you. Oh, I didn't introduce her to teachers. For two years, her teachers have had a student up here, and it's been so fortunate. Ms. Deb Lawson is on the side, and this is a full enclosure room, so they have two teachers co-teaching, and this is Ms. Kaitlin Zabel.
And now I invite from the Whalen School, Ms. Jamie Flynn, to present the award to Ava Rosino.
Okay, I think we're all set up here. Ava Rosino. Ava is a perfect example of a well-rounded, successful fifth-grade student. She brings her A-game to every school and every day. Ava puts forth 100% effort from the smallest to the greatest tasks. Her work ethic truly surpasses her years, as does her academic performance. She's received over a 270 on both her ELA and her math MCAS tests. She's earned a 95 and above on all of her math A-Net tests, and she has been on the principal's list every trimester. Not only has she earned Respect Corps status for her entire school career, she's never earned a single X. When the fifth-grade team identified Ava for this award, many of who are behind me, I asked her teachers, both past and present, for a few words. Ms. Mason, who joins us this evening, noted that Ava is so deserving of this award, I can't think of a better student. Ms. Dougherty added, Ava is a very conscientious student who is a role model for others to aspire to. She is a leader amongst her peers. I am so proud of her. Ms. LaSess, who also joins us this evening, added that Ava is proud to be herself. Ms. Ferragamo, who joins us this evening, added that she pays attention to every detail in her academics, her speech, and her personal appearance. Ms. Leonard described Ava as a unique, talented, responsible, motivated, and creative. She puts her best effort into everything she does. Ava is creative, both in and outside of the classroom. She's able to solve problems by thinking outside of the box. Her favorite activities are reading and swimming, and she loves anything related to art. She often spends spare time creating many art projects that include bracelets, fashionable scarves, and designing things that use recycled household materials. She's a member of the Girl Scout troop, 85135, and over the past year, she gave back to the community by participating in a project where she completed her bronze award for Girl Scouts by crocheting hats for newborn babies at Melrose Wakefield Hospital. It is an honor to be able to recognize Ava for the George V. Kalala Award for Academic Achievement.
So middle school principals, you can see that you're getting a host of talent. I'm sure you're looking forward to it. So from the Garfield Middle School, I invite Ms. Diane Mokaba to give the award to Adajoki Adatebi.
I'd first like to recognize the Garfield Middle School teachers who are here joining us today, Mrs. Susan Lanza, Mr. Max Matera, and Mr. Tony Matera in the audience. Adajoki Adatebi truly epitomizes what it means to be a GMS student who is gaining motivation for success. Over the course of her time with us, Adajoki has experienced success both inside the classroom and outside of the classroom. She has been a principal's list student every quarter during her tenure in middle school. Adajoki has also scored advanced on both the ELA and math MCAS test in the seventh grade. Adajoki has been described by many of her teachers as the ideal student. She comes to school prepared every day, eager to learn, and has been described as being beyond respectful to her peers and her teachers. One of her teachers stated, "I cannot recall a single lesson, project, test, or lab where Adajoki didn't put in 100% of her effort." This year, Adajoki was also selected to represent Revere Public Schools in Project 351. Adajoki was an ambassador for this organization which recognizes and develops leaders through community service and enrichment. As part of her commitment to service, Adajoki organized a successful clothing drive for Cradles to Crayons at Garfield Middle School. Adajoki is an amazing young lady, and we all wish her continued success at Revere High School and beyond.
From Rumney Marsh Academy, Assistant Principal, Mr. Gavin Monagle, to present the award to Amy Lee.
I'd like to thank everyone here tonight, particularly the Kalala family, thank you for this award for Amy. Amy's a tremendous kid for us here at Rumney Marsh Academy. We think it's a special school. Amy emulates everything that's great about the school. She respects kids, she's motivated, she achieves all the time. Her teachers love her. She works and she works and she works. She's talented as can be. Like many of the other award winners, she, too, has been on the principal's list 11 out of 12 times. She has one B+. I checked this morning, she's getting all As, it looks like, again, so I had to check one more time. Amy's also been MCAS 280, perfect score in math, every time she's ever taken the MCAS, every time, right from the third grade up. Congratulations. Amy's no novice at this award. This is her second time winning the George V. Kalala Award. She won it a couple of years ago back in the Garfield School, Garfield Elementary School, a couple of years ago, so it's her second go around here. So she knows what she's doing around here. She had to tell me a few things here, which was good. God bless her. But one thing, you know, I'm fortunate to have known Mr. Kalala, and one thing I can tell you, that he would be extremely proud of Amy, in that, like him, extremely bright kid, extremely bright person, lots of enthusiasm, and just a hard, hard worker. And all of her teachers, that's the big thing. She's smart, she's smart, she's smart. Yeah, but she works and she works and she works, and she just wins people over all the time like that. She wants to go on, she's going to go on to Revere High School, which is great for Revere High, and from there, she hopes to get to Harvard sometime. For those of Harvard alumni, I saw one or two out here earlier, you might want to dig in there before Yale gets her, okay? But she'd be an asset to whatever she does, she's going to be, she's going to be great. Amy, congratulations on the George V. Kalala Award.
And from the Susan V. Anthony, Ms. Joanne Willett, to present the award to Ally Ciano.
So first, I'd like to thank and recognize the SBA staff who is here with me tonight, Assistant Principal Adam Delady, seventh-grade math teacher Skip DeFranzo, and sixth and seventh-grade math teachers Brendan Pezzuto and Justin Pezzuto, and, I think, yep, and eighth-grade math teacher Danny Galucci. Also, I'd like to welcome Ally and her sister Sydney, along with her mom and dad. Ally Ciano, Ally Ciano is a girl wise beyond her years. One conversation with her, and you'll forget, she's a 14-year-old, eighth-grade student. You'll laugh at her dry, witty commentary, you'll marvel at her level-headedness, and you'll be dazzled by her intelligence. You will be wowed by her many accomplishments. She just played Sleeping Beauty in the SBA performance of Into the Woods. She's an aspirant candidate, an award for her excellent grades, and hers was the voice that greeted all SBA staff and students during morning announcements. Despite all of these wonderful attributes, the best thing about getting to know Ally is getting to see her heart. She is a good and loyal friend, a respectful student and daughter, and she cares about those around her. She is consistently kind and was especially gracious when helping raise awareness and funds for the Autism Speaks during the month of April by partnering with members of our life skills classes. Ally Ciano is a shining example of SBA pride and a young lady very deserving of the George V. Kalala Academic Achievement Award. Congratulations, Ally.
So now you can see some of the reasons that Revere High School is number one in the nation. It's been my pleasure to be a part of this. George was a good friend.
Carol, you're not going anywhere yet. We have one more presentation. Before we close this ceremony, I would like to ask Carol Ty for a favor. Seventy years ago, an 18-year-old quarterback for Revere High School masterfully guided the Revere High School football team to a 12-6 victory over Rynch Tech. That quarterback was George Kalala. He was presented a game ball that day by his coach, George Caneely, and teammates. He kept that game ball as one of his prized possessions for his entire adult life. On behalf of the Kalala family, I ask Carol that this football be returned to Revere High School and placed in the Revere High School sports trophy case for all Revere School athletes to see. Thank you. And by the way, Carol is the only one I trust with this football. You have the football now.
I might hit any one of you, so I'll handle that. I just want to say thank you to the city council, not only for being wonderful hosts here tonight, but for always, you know, being on the team with us and voting for whatever we needed in the school department, and of course, I want you to continue to do that. But that's not, that's not the only reason I'm saying. It really is, it's wonderful working with a group that has so much heart and so much ability to find money when we need it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, I just want to thank the Kalala family for being here tonight and for continuing this wonderful tradition. Thank you all. We'll take a brief recess. Okay, we're going to bring the June 9, 2014 Revere City Council meeting back to order.
Mr. President, spin the ruse, take up the mayor's items.
On suspension of the ruse, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number nine, communication from the mayor relative to the water meter program.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Is this, are we on calendar item number nine?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council. Back in 2009, some of you may recall, that the city had decided by virtue of the fact that the water meters that people are using right now have reached their useful lifespan, and so the city obviously has to undertake a new meter program so that residents, rate payers, are being billed accurately for water rates and the corresponding sewer rates. So this all went out to bid, and I'm very happy to say that we are poised to undertake this program beginning in July. This contract, there's actually three portions of the contract. One had to do with the buying of the meters themselves, the second part had to do with the radio devices, and the third contract had to do with the actual installations. These are going to be rolled out in a test period that will last probably, I think, about six months. Our goal is to have the entire installation done, I think, within a two-year timeframe. We have obviously done a lot of homework. This is no small undertaking. You'll see in the document that you have before you the different contract awards and the amounts. The total is just over 3.7 million, and this will, this will be absorbed with our, through our SRF program that the city's currently involved with by virtue of the consent decree. So this system will be truly state-of-the-art. It will all be, it will all be automatically read from one location, and radio signals will be sent back to water sewer billing, and it will also give us the ability to identify leaks almost instantaneously, the day after a reading is taken. Each day, as these, as these meter readings come in, our water sewer billing department will be able to come in and look and see, and this system will actually point out any anomalies that may occur since that prior day's reading. So if there's an exceptionally high water usage that could indicate some sort of break within the system, they will get a communication from the city to let them know that there may be a problem. And this, hopefully, over time, is going to help save rate payers, hopefully, save rate payers a significant amount of money for maybe someone that doesn't hear or see anything for a quarter until they get their water bill, they'll be able anything for a quarter until they get their water bill, they'll be able to get that phone call almost that very next day. So we have, and again, all of this is in the, all of this is in the information that you have before you. Obviously, this is a big change. People are, you know, going to obviously have concerns as to what's going on, so we will have several public meetings with city officials and rate payers. We're going to have at least two public education mailings that will be sent to all rate payers. We will take eight full-page ads to, to describe these changes. We will have a video on our website that people will be able to go to and learn more about it. We will, we will have up to three mailings to all customers with requests for them to schedule appointments through the website or through an 800 number. And all written, all written communications from the contractor to rate payers will be in three languages, English, Spanish, and Portuguese. Obviously, the safety of our residents is paramount, and we've taken steps to address that. All installers will be Cory-checked and background-checked by the Revere Police Department. All personnel will wear approved company uniforms and have picture identifications and wear a meter installer badge. And all vehicles that are going to be used by the contractor will display identification that's acceptable to the city on both sides of the vehicles. So I believe that everybody involved in this project has done a tremendous job. In the long run, these new metering systems that, where the technology just continuously evolves, is going to serve not only the city well, but I believe it's going to serve our rate payers well, so they're not paying for water that they're not using or maybe losing through a faulty meter. Conversely, if that meter is faulty and there's an overuse, this new metering system is going to pick that up too. So the bottom line, it's going to be a more accurate, more dependable, more reliable system that I believe is going to serve the city and the rate payers very well. And I'd be very happy to, to answer any questions that the council may have. If I don't have the answer, our Director of Finance, Georgia Anzoni, is here with us tonight, who helped us spearhead this program. And so he'll be able to help me answer questions that I may not have the answer to.
Well, obviously, Mr. Mayor, this is going to go to Ways and Means, and I respectfully ask my colleagues to hold their questions until the Ways and Means Committee meeting, if it's okay with everybody. But thank you very much.
Calendar item number 10, communication from the mayor relative to free cash transfer to the Stabilization Fund Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund.
Mr. Mayor, good news.
Yeah, very good news. This year, we, we certify just over $100,000 in free cash in our Water Sewer Enterprise Fund, and by virtue of our own ordinances, 15% of this free cash will be transferred into a stabilization account, which that amount in front of you here is $15,232. And I'm just asking that the council approve that transfer to the stabilization fund per our own ordinances.
What's the will of the council? All in favor, all opposed? So voted. Oh, I'm sorry, it has to be a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $15,232 from free cash to the Water and Sewer Stabilization Fund? Counselor Arigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso is absent. Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. Calendar item number 11, communication from the mayor relative to free cash transfer to the Stabilization Fund, the General Fund.
This is better news. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
It's always good news, Mr. President. Mr. President, thank you, members of the council. Once again, this actually is, as the president just alluded to, is very good news. It's repetitive good news. We announced this back several months ago, but the city certified close to $3.3 million in free cash, which, as you all know, is money that, you know, that the city was able to, either through under-anticipated revenues or controlling expenses. So this is what the city wound up with, close to $3.3 million. And again, through an ordinance that was passed by this city council, 15% of that will be designated to the Stabilization Fund, which, as you can see, is 400 and, I have to get my glasses. It's either 493 or 403. I think it's 493. So that will go into stabilization if it's approved by the city council. And as you know, when I submitted the budget, I was going to be asking for some relief to balance that budget with reserves from free cash. So that'll be a conversation that I'm sure we'll have throughout the Ways and Means process and the budget deliberations, but for the purposes of this particular request, this is just simply asking for that money to go from free cash into stabilization. And, you know, I think it bears repeating that our city has had two consecutive bond upgrades, and one of the reasons is because of the commitment that we have had to continue, despite, you know, not-so-good times, continue to pursue additions to our stabilization fund. And, you know, do we have to occasionally dip into them? Yes, not unlike any other city or town, or any other state for that matter, where, you know, there's times that, you know, we do need to dip into it, but there's still that commitment there to continue to build on these reserves and build on stabilization. And that will continue to send a very, very strong signal to the rating authorities. In fact, I think that many of you may know that when we went out just recently to bond for the new Sergeant James J. Hill School and the Harry Delarussos Stadium, the, the best that this city has ever done interest-wise has been around 2%. And the most that we've ever had in terms of interest of buying these bonds has been maybe three bidders. This last time, we had seven or eight bidders, was it eight or seven? Eight bidders, one of them international, Mitsubishi, and we paid, I believe, 0.85% for these bonds, which translates over time, you know, obviously, when you have significant, you know, bond authorizations, such as the ones that would fund the school or the stadium or the combination of the two, that saves an awful lot of money to the taxpayers. And that's why it's so important to keep our bond rating healthy and to keep our stabilization accounts as healthy as we possibly can. And obviously, we have to juggle that so we maintain a certain level of services to our citizens as well, because, you know, while it's important to them, I guess, for our city to control expenses, they still obviously want to have the services that they've become accustomed to, or we always aim to give better and better service. That's obviously the goal. So it's a very fine line that we try to walk and try to balance, but again, I think in the big picture, for now, this is good news for the city, and I would ask for your approval.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, and I think it doesn't, it's not said enough up here that this is one of the largest amounts of free cash ever certified. And the fact that a big part of that is the fiscal management of this city since you've been mayor. You don't get enough credit for it, but you're going to get credit for it from me. We appreciate it, and I think the taxpayers need to know that things like the two bond upgrades and the fact that we can get 0.85% interest money on millions of dollars of bonding is astronomical, and it's, it's wonderful news for the city and the taxpayer. And it's not often talked about enough up here, so I want to congratulate you and your administration for the hard work that you do. Now, this is a procedural amount of money that's going into the stabilization account. I don't think there'll be any disagreement. They will just go ahead and vote that part of it. The rest will go to Ways and Means, of course. Madam Clerk.
Shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $493,840 from free cash to the General Fund Stabilization Fund? Counselor Arigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso is absent. Counselor Haas. Yes, Counselor Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved.
The rest of that will go to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number 12, communication from the mayor relative to the 2015 water and sewer rate.
Mr. President, members of the council, first off, Mr. President, let me thank you for those kind words. That was, that was very, very nice to hear, and, but I, I do-
Well-deserved, well-deserved.
I do want to thank, it's not without the help of, you know, some great people on my finance team that, that really helped make that happen. And so we're going to try to obviously continue to, you know, to do the best we can to, to keep things stable here in the city. Well, the first, so the first few issues, you know, it's been rainbows and unicorns so far, but this, unfortunately, going up on water rates is never something we like to do, but while we're under this consent decree, it, you know, it's something that we have to talk about. And let me just say this, the rates are going up a little bit, but maybe not as dramatically as I had originally thought that they might, because we're starting now to take on all of this debt through the SRF funding program and the millions and millions of dollars that we're being required to put back into our infrastructure in addition with rate increases that were taken from MWRA. So all that being considered, we've set the rates this year. Our sewer rates for residential property for sewer will be $11.71. For commercial, it will be $17.34. The water rates, which obviously are much less expensive than the sewer rates, the residential rate will be $3.91, and the commercial rate will be $5.76. So the combined rates for the residential properties will be 15.62, and the combined commercial rate will be a 23.10. This will result in an increase of about 2.29% to our residential rate payers and an increase of about 2.53% to our commercial rate payers. This, obviously, as I had mentioned earlier, is part of paying down the bonded debt and interest payments for our loans that we have through the State Revolving Fund and also from increased assessment from MWRA. So, you know, we're doing our best, but when you're getting these increased assessments and still under a consent decree, and not to keep beating the drum on the consent decree, but we all know what that consists of, it's, it's put a strain on all of us. It's never good or fun for me to come up here and ask for money for the city council to approve, to, to allow us to continue to abide by the decree that was signed back a few years ago. I know it's never a pleasure for you guys to have to take those votes. Neither one of us wants to be here to talk about it, but, you know, it's the unfortunate reality that we're in, and I think all things considered, going up less than 3% for both residential and commercial rate payers, you know, it could, it could be worse, given the magnitude and the dollar amounts that we have to spend to fix this problem.
Hopefully, we're going to get some relief from our federal delegation on this consent decree, and I know you went to Washington to, to fight for this, taxpayers, and I think people should know that we're not just taking this lying down, and we're trying to do everything we can to spread this out over a period, a longer, longer period than the 10-year period that's pretty much crippling to the rate payers.
If you wanted to, Mr. President, I'd be hap-, we just had a meeting last week with our legal counsel that's representing the city in our work with EPA and the DOJ and the DEP to, to allow us to move forward in amending this consent decree and extending the time from 10 years, hopefully, much further out, so increases that we have to pass along aren't as draconian as they have had to be in these early stages. I'd be happy to meet with the council to discuss those on an ongoing basis, if you'd like, but just so you know, the world, the wheels are still turning. This wasn't just a meeting in Washington, come back, and now we move on to another project. I mean, this, we are going full steam ahead. There's already been correspondence. Administratively, there's some things we have to do to set the table, to go to that next step, which is already in motion. So, but I'd be happy to come up here and discuss, if the council wanted to, where we're at in that process of moving ahead with this amendment to the consent decree.
I just wanted to pretty much educate the, the rate payers to know that you're doing a lot of work to try to, try to help this out. Okay, Counselor Haas.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, with all the work that's been done the last four to five years pertaining to sewerage, all right, are we starting to see a reduction in our sewer charges from the MWRA?
You know, the reduction in our assessment, I, you know, I don't have the information, like a five-year, a five-year schedule that I can look at right now, but I can tell you this, not so much from an assessment standpoint, but from an SSO standpoint in terms of reduced, you know, a reduction in SSOs, we've seen a significant decrease in SSOs. So we know the work is working. As far as the assessments from the MWRA, I'd have to get back to you on that. I don't know if you have the information charge readily available, but I-
As everything with the MWRA, in my experience, is the sewer assessments go up. It's not based on the-
It's not based on actual sewerage.
Right, not based on actual sewerage. It's the estimate, the sewerage is, and that's why it continues to go up. It received an increase.
Yeah, I think we should be receiving a reduction instead of just using past history and adjusting it.
Every city in town would like to try to do that, but at the same time, there's also leakage in pipes, and that's the water that comes in, and the way they use their formulas, that would take effect, and not only that, but the amount of sewerage that goes through, through the lines, although that's meeting, but is it accurate? They're not ready to say it's accurate.
But again, we've reduced a tremendous amount of sewerage in the system.
We reduced the leakage of the sewerage through the, I believe, the, the way the infrastructure is working, it's far more efficient now. I'm also certain that we decreased the amount of sewerage that goes through the pipes because of the fact that, you know, we still have, say, for example, we still have illegal pump pumps, we still have some of those areas, but what we did is we fixed the infrastructure to work more efficiently so that the sewerage doesn't leak out, you don't have the SSOs that the mayor said, and you don't have those issues coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I could just add to that, Mr. President, if I could just add to that, because I think we stay, you know, to, to answer your first question about has the assessment gone down, I think we should look back and see if we can find out how that assessment has gone. But just to give you an example, to kind of show you the magnitude of what some of the problems that we've had, if you look at McMackin Field right now, okay, all of that water that's there, I mean, that's, that park has got water for a long, long time. Now you notice this year is worse than it's ever been, and that is an indication that that sewer pipe that we, that we replaced, unfortunately, we had to replace it on an emergency basis, but all that water prior to that sewer line being replaced was going into that sewer pipe, and we were getting charged for it as a community. So that's just one glaring example of now that water has nowhere to go. It used to be able to go into the sewer system and right out to Deer Island, and the city of Revere would be charged for that. Now that, now that's just been replaced, so it's hard to say that we've seen any benefit financially from that, but those are the type of things, you know, and it's funny, because someplace that's prone to flooding actually would take advantage of a broken sewer pipe, it would benefit them, but unfortunately, you know, we're charged by the EPA and the DOJ to, you know, to fix these problems. Now we got to come up with a, with a way on how we're going to fix the problem at McMackin, so we're trying to work with them. so we're trying to work with them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Riordan.
Oh, go ahead. I have actually last year's figures for the sewer assessment. Last year's figures for the sewer assessment was $9,971,000. This year was $10,201,000, so it went up 300,000. It historically has gone up that much.
That doesn't make sense. If we've been working in the system to reduce the volume-
Their rates go up too, the mountain-
Oh, I understand they go up, but I, I understand that, but we still should see not an increase, a noticeable discount. A discount based on all of the work that the company's been doing out there. As the mayor mentioned, look at McMackin Field, all that water in the past has gone into the sewerage.
It's gone into the sewerage, that's correct, but at the same time, MWRA rates themselves have gone up, and what they're doing is they're billing us accordingly. We have actually the engineers from CDM in constant contact with MWRA, telling them exactly how much sewage we're using, and they still call with us any of these figures as they come over. But, you know, if you want a further answer to that, what we can have is to have CDM come in and tell you exactly how that works.
Yeah, but when we have, have them come into the council, I mean, are they on a pay basis or are they on a contract?
Well, they're under contract, so they, uh, you know, we don't pay them to come to meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Counsel Riordan.
Well, I should remind everybody that Bob Button was here last week, and this subject came up. Uh, I specifically asked him how much we were experiencing a reduction in wastewater infiltration, uh, from, from groundwater and other sources, and he said it has gone down, but he couldn't give us a specific answer. I think what we, we need to talk to maybe is Donnie, and have him come in and give us some idea, uh, what the nexus is between the reduction in, in infiltration and cost, because obviously, as George has said, MWRA raises the rates every year. We don't know whether, uh, the rate we're being, or what we're being charged in total has, is a function of the increase in the rate without knowing what the decrease in the flow is. So, uh, I think Donnie probably could address that question better since he's the guy setting the rate, uh, but I, I think it is time to start talking about that, because the other thing that Bob said was that although it hasn't been a great, uh, reduction at this point, he anticipates that as time goes forward, we will have a greater reduction. And I specifically asked him about the tremendous, uh, increase during a storm that we experienced, which obviously is an indicator that a lot of drainwater is getting into our sewage system. And, uh, and that's, to me, a huge, a huge problem that is being addressed. What we'd like to know is what's the nexus between addressing the problem and reducing our costs and maybe recovering some of this, uh, money to pay our $50 million bill, uh, with, 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 uh, sustainable, uh, infrastructure improvement and, and its results. So I, I'd like to see Donnie come up and maybe just give us a little tutorial on the nexus between the, uh, water flow, the, the wastewater flow and, uh, the cost of treating it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Riordan, Counsel Powers. Thank you, Mr. President. I would think, uh, you know, I brought this question up to Bob Button, is this gonna significantly reduce our inflow, uh, going out and being charged back as sewerage? Uh, what I would like to see is, uh, the inflow for a particular period, uh, prior and the inflow for a particular period current, and that would give us an idea of what the gallonage, the decrease in gallonage has been, uh, as a result of the relining and, and, pulling out these illegal hookups, uh, throughout the city. So I think that would, uh, you know, I understand that the rates go up at the MWRA, of course they do, but I'd like to know what we're getting as a decrease in gallonage being, going out to, that we're charged for at the MWRA. If it's, it should be, I would imagine, with all the money we're spending, a significant decrease, and I, and I hope Mr. Button would be able to, or Donnie and Mr. Button would be able to come up here and give us those numbers at some future date. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counsel Powers. Counsel Penta? We're gonna have a vote in this, I think, tonight, uh, since everybody's asked the questions I think they need to ask.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, I couldn't have said it better than the mayor did, with, with McMackin Field. My, my pet peeve with that is, they diagnosed this line four, five years ago, and evidently there was water getting in there from day one, because, I mean, you could see, it's actually sea level now, it's summer and it's sitting there, you're right. Every time I go by there, I look and I feel bad for those kids in the park, but that's my thing with CDM, and, and I can't educationally give a good estimate of where they're at, because I don't have the information that the order and Bob Button's supposed to give us, of how much we appropriated so far and what work they did, and how much is left over to spend before we appropriate this new money, which $300,000, as George just said, to me, honestly, you're right, Mayor. I thought, my biggest fear is it's gonna go up five times that, even more. That's peanuts compared to what we're paying for and the new people moving in and everything else. That's, so we definitely had to reduce something with the MWRA, because that is peanuts compared to $10 million or $300,000 is mere peanuts, but the, the bottom line question is, and everybody said it up here, Bob Button's a seawater getting into our pipes going MWRA, that we're paying for all this stuff going there. I mean, the sub pumps, you know, and, and those are the things of mine, I mean, they're talking about 2015, given the MC program, and that's just giving the people to notify us. You basically just said that we will, it even enhances my argument more of how much we're telling these people about water meters and getting their homes. You know, that we're gonna send letters out, mailings out, uh, eight articles in the newspaper, and it's gonna be the toughest thing, even with the sub pumps, is getting these homes, you know, when the people are there, but we have to get in there for the meters. So I just can't see paying both times for it if we're going into homes with the meters, and I commend you for getting the meters this early, because, yeah, will the city save money? When this is all said and done, five, 10, 15 years from now, there's no question we're gonna save money on water rates, but on the same end, we're paying it on the other end. But I'm saying, yeah, would you, if, if everything was status quo today without spending the money and the work that's done in 10 years, yeah, you would definitely save a lot of money. But unfortunately, we're gonna be paying it on one end to, to the bond money, you know, and unfortunately, I mean, this is mere penis water rate going up. To me, I think this is a big success, and I commend you on it, but CDM still does not prove to me that everything that they're telling us, that, I mean, there's some, there's things they're dropping the ball on, that's my opinion. I could be wrong, but McMackin Field was one of them that, that should have been, that should have been known three, four years ago when they lined, when they took the pitches and everything else, because it was leaking, there's proof of it, because now it's in the park. But my thing, I think there's a lot of answers, CDM always. I know, Mr. President, you see different with that, but I'm not voting on any of the money until I get that, that information from them, so thank you.
You're my able Ways and Means Chairman, and you're watching the city's purse strings, so that's why I pointed you to that, to that position.
And, and this doesn't reflect in you, Mayor, I know you inherited this problem, I mean, you came in and, you know, um, this is a nightmare that the whole city is facing, and I think you, you've put in a lot of time and effort in it, and I think the president said that, going to Washington, trying to do everything you possibly can with the rates. But, you know, as a city council, hopefully we can help you a little bit, maybe slow them down, or even, like you said, I know the camera truck is coming next week, all this money we're paying for the, for the CWS, uh, fund, maybe transfer into some of it to DPW workers, and maybe you're gonna even hire some people out of this fund, and I think you can, and Bob Button didn't give me an answer that night, but if we bought the truck out of it, we're paying for the meters out of it, and, you know, the, the, the building department is doing some work there, I can't see why we can't use some of this money to hire some of these guys on DPW, you know, and without going to the taxpayers, and I think, you know, we could fund people in the ward department there. I, I, you know, I'd appreciate if you look into that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you bring up an interesting point. I mean, I think somebody brought it up last week about hiring more DPW workers, and I'd love nothing more than to be able to hire more people down to DPW. I don't know if the SRF funding, uh, where it's a loan that I can actually fund positions, I don't know. I mean, if, if I can, I'd love to, uh, because then we'd have them there, we'd have full-time bodies that can actually be out there working on these problems, you know, every day. So, I'd love to, uh, I'd love to, uh, to see if that's a, uh, a permissible use with those funds. Um, as far as, I just wanna go back for a second, because it does affect hundreds of kids. We do have a meeting, uh, pertaining to McMackin Field, and I know you're the ward council down there. I hope, I don't know if you've been contacted, but I think that meeting's coming up and very shortly. If you haven't been contacted, uh, please call Sophia in my office, uh, but I did tell her to make sure you were included in the, in, in those discussions, so, but, you know, I just wanna make sure, because we do need to, and, and, by the way, CDM, that's a privately-owned field, and they are going to, uh, try to help us as best they can, and even we as a city, it's a very difficult, you know, problem for us, um, to go into, you know, private property and, uh, and start to, you know, look at these. Now, I believe that some of their problems have been caused because of work the city's done, so there could be some exposure there for the city, but, you know, I just want to, you know, and obviously, we wanna be able to help them as much as we can, but, you know, that's gonna be a conversation that we'll have with them, I think, in the next week or so, so, um, yeah.
All right, on the, uh, the water and sewer rates. Counsel Gino. Go ahead. No, 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 go ahead. Come on, I didn't see you, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm kind of, it's really hard for me to vote on this tonight, because if I had mentioned the number one thing that I get complaints about in the city, it's that we pay for water like it's gold in Revere, and it's to no fault of our city. I know that you're doing everything you can to try to get our rates at a reasonable rate, but it's really hard for our senior citizens, and it's really hard for our families that have multiple children, and our citizens are doing the right thing. They're installing the showerheads that are energy efficient, and they're installing all the pipes and, and the fittings that they need to help save money, but we pay more than most communities because of our, um, work with MWRA and because of the quality of the water we get and all the issues we had to get the quality of the water that we do have, and it's just, it's very, very difficult to vote on this tonight, because I know how much it deeply affects so many people in Revere, and it's a huge problem, and I really hope that, you know, you continue to work, as you have been for our city, to represent us and make sure they know that we can't afford this anymore, and it really is unacceptable that, um, our families are paying so much for water, because we shouldn't have to be. You know, there has to be some relief somewhere, we're doing everything right, we're improving our systems in every way that we possibly can, and I hope to see some relief next year, and hopefully it's a decrease. Thank you.
Just a point of information, Mr. President.
State your point.
And I can understand the council's frustration with the water rates and everything else. I don't see this rate changing, it is what it is, and I think the mayor took some money transferring to the water enterprise system to keep it a little low, is that correct?
Trying to, you know, because that's, because that's more money that we can use to, to, to hopefully fix more problems. I mean, this is not gonna be a short, this is not a short-term fix. I mean, this goes back to the creation of the MWRA. In fact, I can remember back, I, it was the early days when the MWRA was first established, being at a meeting, and, uh, they had predicted, uh, way back then, 20 years ago, that, um, that water and sewer was gonna become a very, very costly, uh, 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 bill for people throughout all the MWRA communities. You know, we're not, we're not, um, you know, we're not, it's not for lack of trying, we're trying to keep these costs down. I think keeping it under 3%, I was, I was actually quite pleased with that. I mean, obvious, you know, hopefully the day will come, I can come up here and say, "By the way, water rates are going down 3%." I'd love to be able to make that announcement, but for now, while we're under this decree, while we have to keep on doing the work, um, we're trying to do the best we can to make sure that the work is being done, but the rates are trying to be as much under control as they can be. So, um, but I share your frustration. I hear, if you spent a week in my office, you'd see all about the people that come in and complain about water bills, believe me. I, I see it, and I, and I, uh, I feel your pain, believe me.
Mr. President, just a point of inquiry. Just a point of inquiry, just to, to the mayor, I'm, I'm having meetings just about every day this week and one Monday, I mean, you know, just for the council wants us in another committee meeting, you don't need to vote until, uh, I mean, you can hold it off a week, it's, I mean, it's not that the rates-
When do we need to, uh, set the rate?
But what I'm saying, by the 23rd, is that too late?
I really think we have the information, and let me just ask a question. Isn't, isn't the increase in the MWRA rate more than we're going up?
On a percentage basis, to me? I'd have to go, I'd have to do some quick math on that, you know, to go from the not-
You said 300 and something thousand on a $10,000, a $10 million? That's, so that sounds, so that sounds to me like 3% or more, doesn't it?
From the MWRA? So 400,000, so with the water and sewer combined-
Oh, okay.
It looks like, it's still close to, it's still close to 3%. So we're right, we're going up almost, almost right in line with the increase of MWRA.
All right, Counsel Morabito, you wanna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion to put this in committee in a roll call.
Well, okay, but here's the risk, okay? If we don't get the rates set on time, then I don't know how it's gonna impact people if they get their water bills late and late fees that could be built in, because they won't have enough time to pay, so that's my only reservation for going to committee.
Yeah, you know, my-
If the council, if the council thinks that the water rate is gonna change-
I normally send everything to committee, but I, I think we have enough information, either vote yes or no right now, tonight, but if you wanna put that motion in to send it to committee, we'll vote on that, and then we'll either vote on the, Counsel Gino, you got something else?
Yes, quickly, before we vote on Counsel Morabito's motion, what timeframe are we exactly looking at, just so we all know before we make a decision? When do we need the rates set by? Because I know we do have a meeting next Monday, and we have meetings all week next week, so it would be addressed, oh, this week, rather, so it would be addressed immediately. I just wanted to know what the final deadline is.
Well, I, just as a point of information, the next council meeting's not until the 23rd, that's pushing it off a little too far, I think, so it, it's my position that we have enough information, it's not gonna go down, we know the reasons for the increase, we're either gonna vote on it now or vote on the same rate, uh, in a week or so, and the 23rd is really too late for what needs to be done, uh, technically.
I mean, if I thought there was a chance, Mr. President, I mean, if something's gonna come out of the council where you're gonna reset the rate, I don't know. It's never happened since I've been on the city council and now my, my third year as mayor. If you're gonna try to change the rate in some capacity, I don't know how that would work or how, how that would happen, but, uh-
Can't, can't we put in a next Ways and Means meeting? Can't, Mrs. Chairman?
Well, just, just a point of information. Yeah, the committee as a whole has to vote on it. I mean, it's, it's the water rates. I mean, I don't have a problem, I'm gonna be here anyway, and, you know, my committee will hopefully be here, and for the council, up to the president, it's not up to me.
The next meeting is the 23rd, so I think we need to vote on this tonight, so what's the will of the council?
Point of information, state your point.
We can, uh, the, the president can, uh, uh, name a meeting at any time that he'd like, and six members of the council can, can call a meeting, uh, so, I, you know, to say that, to say we need to vote on it tonight because there's not a meeting until the 23rd is a little disingenuous.
Well, I don't like to be called a liar. Uh, I, I think I know your, I think I know enough about being a city councilor to know who can call a meeting or when or where. That wasn't a threat, I was trying to be accommodating, we all have the information. We wanna play these semantic games that anybody can vote, uh, six, six councils can call a meeting. I think all of us up here know that.
That's fact, Mr. President, that's a fact, that is a fact. And I did not call you a liar. I did not call you a liar.
I don't be, well, disingenuous is a semantic call of a liar.
Mr. President, point of order, there's a roll call on, called for.
Mr. President, my motion is to have it this week, fit it into this week's Ways and Means Committee, if that's okay with, so let's take a vote.
Mr. President, as a motion, as a recommendation, Counsel Penta says he will address it this week, there is more than six members on the, his committee, they can call for meeting themselves.
Mr. Director.
If I may. If you have any questions tonight, you can ask them if you would like, we're here, I'm here to answer them, the mayor's here to answer them, we're all here to answer them. them. To delay this would cause a problem in the billing department. The 23rd is too late. The 23rd really is too late because, one, we're going in a new billing system and we want to make certain that all the bugs are worked out of it because we, this is the first time we're doing a citywide on a new billing system with a new rate. So.
So I would ask my colleagues, if you have any other questions that would, would cause you not to vote for the, the water and sewer rate, why don't you ask the questions? The people who have the answers are here tonight. What is the point of sending it to committee? I don't see a point. Now, anybody wants to ask the questions, go right ahead.
If I may, Mr. President, the other thing too is if you have questions about the water rate like councilor Haas had, I'll gladly get them that information. I'll look at the MWRA formula and I'll sit down and see how much they charge us. And that's a good question. Right, that's a good question and it, it's reasonable, very reasonable. But that I can do without the rate not being set because they're not going to change their rates on us now. So we're going on the rates that they're charging us, so that's not going to change. But I'll gladly do that. I'll go to the MWRA, see about our usage and I'll find out, we'll talk about the usage in the sewer, the metering and get all of this information. I'll sit down with Bob Buttons and we'll compile a, we'll actually compile a, some sort of spreadsheet to tell you exactly what's happening and how it's happening and why it's happening. The other thing-
Mr. President, Councilor Riordan, Mr. President, on the motion, it seems to me that, as the mayor suggested, the likelihood of us having any expertise based on any information we could get over the next week to change this water rate is non-existent. Perhaps we should have discussed this a month ago, but that's not the case right now. What I'm going to suggest, as Mr. Enzoni has suggested, is we need a little summit on this. We need a summit as to what the improvements that we have put into place now for two years, Mr. Mayor, we've been on this, three years, three years, where we are at this, this point with the improvements and perhaps what we can expect for next year. Because I would start to, I would like to think that by next year, we should see some improvements that actually turn into money. And I'd like to see that and discuss that with the, with CDM Smith and with our, our Director of Public Works and Mr. Enzoni as well. And start thinking to next year because it's too late to do anything about this year, let's face it. And I'd ask the able councilor to withdraw his motion at this point and that we move forward with a vote on this.
Mr. President, under the circumstances that we cannot have a meeting before the 26th, you said, I'm taking your word for it. I don't have the rules of order in front of my face, but I'll withdraw if that is the case.
Thank you, Councilor Moravito. On the water and sewer rates.
In accordance with section 13.04.130 of the revised ordinances of the City of Revere, shall the city council adopt a water rate of $3.91 per 100 cubic feet for residential owners and $5.76 per 100 cubic feet for commercial owners effective July 1, 2014. Councilor Arigo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Gino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasa was absent. Councilor Haas? Councilor Ha? Councilor Haas, yes. Councilor Moravito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nowoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Penta?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers? Yes, Councilor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the water rate has been established.
Mr. President, thank you very much and thanks to, you know, thank you to the council for that. This, as I say, it's no, on a personal level for me, it's not going to cause me one ounce of extra work if it went to the 23rd or something. I'm more concerned about the people that have to generate the bills out to get these bills out by July. And then I worry about the people that maybe get those bills late and don't have as much time to pay it. So that's, you know, and as you know, Mr. President, this, I mean, this is all based on a formula. Councilor Riordan actually, I think, makes perfect sense. And I think I even suggested that. I'd love to have a meeting, kind of a summit. We've had financial summits before. Let's have a summit on this consent decree where everybody can be brought up to speed, not only on how much work has been done or how much money we've spent, but where we're at in terms of modifying this decree and what the future is so you all have a better understanding. So next year when I come and I ask about, you know, the water rate, you guys will already have your information pretty much. You'll have that understanding of what's been happening. So, you know, maybe we can avoid some of the, you know, unknowns or, or, you know, those type of things.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think that we all get emotional over water and sewer rates because we're all upset that we have to raise these astronomical water and sewer rates for the ratepayers. None of us are happy with this and I understand my colleagues wanting to send this to committee because we're looking for answers, but unfortunately, the answers are very simple. We had a governor that didn't sign a piece of paper when he was running for president, Michael Stanley Dukakis, and we ended up paying to clean the Boston Harbor and a handful of communities that happened to fall in the MWRA. So this is what happened to us and unfortunately, people have been paying for years and, and we have very little control over this. Then you add the consent decree from the federal government to fix our aging infrastructure and it's just a nightmare and everybody gets emotional because we have to raise these damn sewer rates. So nobody's happy up here. Everybody has the best of intentions. Sometimes we get a little carried away with our rhetoric and I'm as guilty as anybody else on that, but to anybody I might have offended, I apologize. And hopefully we all feel the same way.
Mr. President, suspension of the rules, please.
Councilor Nowoselski asks for suspension of the rules. All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Ask for reconsideration, hoping it will not prevail.
On reconsideration, that it will not prevail. Back to the regular order of business.
Calendar item number two, hearing called is ordered on the petition of National Grid to install conduits on Beach Street in accordance with the plan on file.
Proponents? Proponents? Name and address for the racket. Press the button, please.
Jerry Tilly, National Grid, 170 Mefit Street, Malden.
State what you've got going on.
There we go, we're great. I'm here to answer any questions about the petition to install two conduits on Beach Street for 525 Beach Street for the new apartment building.
Okay, any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anybody opposed to these conduits being installed? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any city councilors?
Mr. President.
Councilor Nowoselski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I do have one question. I know it shows two locations, one from a manhole to a pole and one from a pole to the building. Why does the manhole to the pole have to happen?
We have equipment on the first pole that the customer needs to use for the riser pole to go to the pad mount transformer to the new apartment building. We have to, that right now feeds the underground, fuses it, so we have to move it over and then go underground to the manhole that the existing pole now is feeding.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. So, Mr. President, this, this location is stated as 525 Beach Street. It's a new apartment, low-income, mixed-use facility and I hope we can vote on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Nowoselski. Any other councilors? No? Okay, what's the will of the council?
Move to approve, please.
Move to approve. On a roll call? No. All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
In accordance with provisions of Rule 23 of the city council's Rules of Order, the following motions or communications are being reported out of committee with the recommendation to be placed on file. Calendar item number three, proposed amendment to the ordinances relative to the sale of tobacco products.
Placed on file.
Calendar item number four, petition to abandon a certain portion of Brookdale Street.
Placed on file.
Calendar item number five, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Yolanda Napolitano, 63 Washington Ave, Revere, Mass. to the Revere Public Library Board of Trustees.
Appointments.
Calendar item number six, communication from the city clerk relative to a surety bond approval for John Camerata.
Motion to approve, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number seven, communication from Veterans Affairs relative to the installation of a memorial pole for Pasquale S. Del Greco, A-1C Air Force, at 123 Malden Street.
Mr. President, motion approved and placed on file.
All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Councilor Gino that the mayor request the Department of Public Works to install a guardrail at 529 Washington Ave in the interest of public safety. Several vehicles have driven over the homeowner's lawn at this location.
Councilor Janino.
Thank you. I'd also like to add the ward councilor, Councilor Patch, to this motion. I put it in quickly because the resident was very concerned about this. He contacted me several times. Several vehicles have driven into his lawn and almost into his house recently, so I hope that we can look into the feasibility of putting something there to protect, you know, his property and for pedestrians walking across that property because it's a very highly trafficked area. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
I'm sorry, buddy, missed that. Calendar item number eight, council president, it's communication from Site Plan Review relative to number 85 Broadway, Revere, Mass. Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Councilor Moravito that the mayor request Mass Highway to replace or fill an uncovered junction box on the sidewalk before the entrance of the former Shaw's supermarket parking lot, entrance located at 209 Revere Beach Parkway. This poses a safety risk to citizens who walk along the sidewalk.
Councilor Moravito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I discovered this uncovered junction box while walking to the Beachmont train station. Usually it's covered and contains wires. There's actually, it's now uncovered and leaves a one and a half foot drop and poses a public safety issue to people who are walking or jogging along that sidewalk.
Thank you, Councilor Moravito. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
We have a late motion from Councilor Zambudo relative, actually, they wanted that the city council issue a certificate of commendation to Sofia Forgioni in honor of her winning the 2014 Unsung Heroine Award from the City of Revere, Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Woman.
I put this motion in, I know that everybody knows who's had anything to do with the mayor's office, what an outstanding individual Sofia Forgioni is and how she represents the city and everybody is pleased when they're done doing their business in the mayor's office. And obviously, the state recognized her with this wonderful award, so I think that it's only fitting that we should recognize her. So that's what we will do. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted. No further business. We will be adjourned until June 23.